Reverend Walter on Friday. The earliest he could accept, even though he still wishes it could be later, would be 12:30. He could work with 12:30. So he did suggest 1 o'clock would even be better. But talking to the fifth precinct, 3 o'clock is really very important that they are complete with their work with us on that day. And, you know, 12:30, certainly by 3 o'clock we would be done. But if we wait till 1 o'clock, that might get a little bit too close for them. So that's why the request is 12:30. And I know Pam is here from the church, and I'm hoping that that would be sufficient for them as well.
So I guess we'll, should we do these individually? I guess that would be a form of motion, reserve that same time for the May road by S. D. Ch. 5K. And parade, that's a semi-horshing.
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
All right.
And then some of these dates, we're just looking to block out the dates. Last year there was a rather successful pet parade for the South County Coalition Against Domestic Violence. So we're looking to host that event again for Saturday, May 17th.
We do have actually an amendment on that one as well. I met with the pet parade committee on Friday. It came up, you know, the rain date that we reserved would be a Sunday. We are looking to do the congregational church like we did last year for a lot of the activities. So again, Sunday would be very problematic to do that. So going back over it, what we're now requesting is May the 3rd with a rain date of May the 17th. The rain date be May the 17th. Because we did the Saturday right before it's Mother's Day, Saturday right after it's open Memorial Day weekend. And obviously you have to have the actual date before the actual, the rain date. You can't do May 17th, rain date May 3rd. So we've got to reverse it.
Is this every early in the morning again there?
Uh, yes, we start at 9 o'clock. We're working with trustee Hilton on potential route extension possibly and how that's gonna run. But right now, you know, we're just looking for the date to be secured and with details of road closure to follow.
Yeah. Did you check the theater as far as?
Um, just on the calendar online, I checked it. There's nothing going on May the 3rd. And I don't know, Jack, if you have anything that you know were happening at the theater on May the 3rd? That was our only other concern because we'd be utilizing a lot of that back parking lot behind the church.
Which is, should be part of the request.
Yes.
Useful, a full park.
You know what, you might, that starts getting into the dance recital competition season.
Okay.
That's a little early, but sometimes they have these renegade dance recitals, right?
Who knows nothing about renegade dance recitals?
That start like very early. So I would contact Clara and just make sure that this happens.
I will definitely do that. So I don't know if we could reserve that date and then, you know, we can work on the details. We are requesting the use of the parking lot larger than we did last year. We'd like, one of the things that they want to change at Pet Parade last year is to create a larger fair after with booths catered to pet owners and other fun activities afterwards. So we were looking to probably utilize the full length of the parking lot behind the church as opposed to the half that we used last year, last time.
Talked around my limits also. Shark of hip services.
Absolutely.
Another new event, I guess, which we're launching is the Patch of Nautical Festival slash Pirate's Day. Is that, you still get that same date, did you?
Yes, everything there is the same. Again, the details, it's just, it's something, a brand-new request from the business promo, our business promotions committee have been talking about doing some kind of nautical festival. Obviously, being a nautical community, it only makes sense. But we want to work, obviously, with the Riverfront Committee as well on this.
Are you looking to do this on Main Street or on where?
Well, I mean, the original request is from the business promotion committee, and their original request to me was Main Street. You know, of course, I say, you know, doing a nautical festival just on Main Street when you're so close to the waterfront, you know, might not, you know, we should include the waterfront in on it as well. One thing we're discussing is we had very successful use of the trolleys on Small Business Saturday. It's a relatively reasonable cost to get it for five hours. So certainly coming up with a concept that would incorporate a trolley service that could shuttle people back and forth between the waterfront and Main Street, which is something we want to look at. And then, of course, we'll look at the logistics. But that's a date we certainly would like to reserve for a nautical festival. And there won't be a Main Street component on it.
Okay. And then the Parks Department is gonna be involved?
Yes.
Is that a form of motion as well?
Second.
David.
Hi.
And then Alive After Five, we went to Thursdays last year, looking to host four different evenings, starting on Thursday through our 3rd, the 24th, July, Thursday will be 7th. And then looking to also host a Friday evening on August 29th. So David, we just want to share.
Yeah, absolutely. As explained in the letter that I presented to you, I will, first of all, I want to make it very clear. From the Chamber's perspective, extremely satisfied with the Thursday Alive After Five events. We, they were a huge success. The Chamber did very well with them. The crowd was excellent. From our perspective, a hundred percent win. But, you know, certainly, I mean, I'm not, I don't ignore the social media chatter that we have. And certainly from a lot of patients, we did take a lot of criticism from moving it to Friday, from Thursday to Friday. On top of that, I've gotten non-stop, consistent requests from our vendors. They were very upset about the move from Thursday to Friday. They felt that really hurt their business, you know, as well as some, most of his people management were happy with Thursday, too. Couple thought Friday was, was better. So from my perspective, I thought as a compromise that we would ask for one Friday, see if there was opening for, willing to discuss that. I have talked to the fifth precinct and Captain Hardy in the fifth precinct. He was receptive to the idea. He didn't give me a hundred percent sign off. He just said, let me think about this a little bit and give back to you. That was last week, and I spoke, reached out to him again today. I just didn't get a confirmation, though I got a sense that they would consider it. I don't know if you want to hold that pending, the fifth precinct's support on that. But, you know, if the village has said that Thursdays is the way to go, then, you know, I, to me, I just want to keep the event going.
The worst case would be we move back to the 28th.
Exactly, exactly.
But who realizes it's been the fifth precinct if not the?
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
It's a question, it's kind of your.
And it gives me the opportunity to announce, everybody knows, probably knows James Skidmore, who's the, one of the managers of the breakouts. James has taken on, gonna be chairing Alive After Five for us this year. He's got a lot of ideas, especially to incorporate the artist component of our community, to have it much more, be in the forefront of our Alive After Five this year, as well as coming up with some theme nights. Matter of fact, now with the approval, we're looking to make that Thursday, July the 3rd, a salute to our veterans as a way to honor our veterans and to add a little bit more spice to Alive After Five, to create little theme nights for each one, to give it a little bit unique one for each one. And I'm very excited to have James chair that committee. And John Maggio, my assistant in the office, is also the co-chairman, and he's here to answer any questions as well.
So the one question, is the 4:00 PM closure of the street, is that a little bit earlier than normal?
No, that's, we all, because it starts at 5:00, but we close the street at 4:00 for the vendors to set up. And that has actually been there. And actually, you just reminded me of one other thing. As was announced previously by Jamie, we have a restaurant committee now in the community, which I'm, we're, at the Chamber ecstatic about. I mean, there's no doubt that the energy on Main Street is thanks to the bar restaurants on Main Street. Right now, they've been very successful. We had their first meeting on Thursday night, as you mentioned. One thing that they did bring up to me that was even more important to them certainly than a Friday night was an extra hour. They really feel that, you know, things don't get really going for them until 7, 8 o'clock. And it's like really that last, right now, we're closing at 9:00. You know, they're only getting a really good hour, and then it's shut down. So one thing that was even more important, it was probably, and then we were even willing to not, because Alive After Five means after 5:00, that we don't start until 6:00 to get it to 10:00. That we give up the earlier hour if we could get the extension to 10:00 o'clock. Again, I don't know if that's something we want to discuss later, but it was certainly something that came out of the restaurant committee that, you know, at least thought I would make a request for.
We have to sue it something.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, I mean, it's a suggestion by the restaurateurs that we've had, you know, the sun goes down, the hours get a little late, that's where the problems start to arise. So I would be less inclined to be willing to grant that, but that would be up to the rest of this board. But I would be a little bit less inclined.
But, you know, we'll leave over there, maybe there's discussion now, allow this new restaurant committee to, you know, state their case.
When you approached Sergeant Park, Captain Hardy, on the issue, maybe several times, we said, talk about it.
Perfect.
Because before it got to this point, front of the streets at 9:00 and 9:00 and 3:00, it was like chaos.
Okay, no, I, you know, this is the start of the discussion. It was, you know, I just would like to at least entertain it with that, because I like the fact that we now have a unified group with the restaurants that is kind of, kind of speaking as one voice and give them an opportunity to do that, see if we can work something out. But, I mean, at least the dates we, I don't know if we could hold on that long.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Last couple of items, you know, kind of long history, we can go into, Carnival Sales, Sidewalk Sales, starting on July 10th and 12th. We could be fairly fun night. By July 11th, with, it was raining, requested July 18th, and that's an informed motion. And then, so I said, the Patch of, so again, Sidewalk Sales, there would be August 7th and 9th, we could be Oldies Car Show, R. O. P. The rain date requested for August, and that's informed motion.
Jerry, 7th is also Live After Five?
Uh, yeah, that would be Thursday, August 7th, and then the rest of the weekend would also be Sidewalk Sales.
Which was, which, yes, the same as last year.
No, no, but that's not my point. My point is that the following night, you know, the streets could be closed.
Right.
Main Street be closed two nights in a row.
That's what was last year.
As it was last year, that was the same as last year. I mean, that's the same, let me say it this way, it was the same that was set up for last year. Both Family Fun Night and Oldies Night got postponed due to the rain. So it was set up on the calendar that they were next to each other. But the weather had us utilize a rain date for both those events. So technically, we didn't do it last year, but it was approved to be that way last year.
To me, it seems excessive.
Maybe we pushed it to another weekend, say, the weekend of 15th, and then it's the second weekend instead of how you are one weekend. So I guess, yeah, I understand the point, but I'll just, it's always so many weekends in the summer that you're posting these things.
Okay.
Eight nights closing so far over the summer.
Well, the only problem, okay.
That's a good idea.
But it's a good question. I, I still would come up with a show.
You want, wanting to market, you could lose yourself a little bit by going to consecutive, you lose people. They would normally come from a week to a week to a week, but they're not gonna come tonight and then come back tomorrow. Whether they have families or not.
I mean, maybe make that one.
You know what, I honestly tend to agree with you. As a matter of fact, I wanted to avoid that in all uncertain terms. That was one thing I felt, even from my perspective of working on both events. I feel like Family Fun Night gets shortchanged because all the focus gets on Alive After Five. But when we were going through the weekends of when we could do these things, when you add in the music festival and everything else like that, it was just, you know, that one, that, as you see with the, with the, with the Oldies Night, we did avoid that problem. But with the Family Fun Night, we couldn't. It was just made, a lot of that had to do with the Great Southern Music Festival that weekend and trying to space out the Live After Fives, so there's not one on top of the other. So that's why we ran into that. But I understand, this is just pending the dates. We're very much willing to work with the village, and we appreciate that as of this point, we're pretty much granting most of the requests that I'm asking for, and it's very much appreciated. But, you know, we do have time to put these together, and if we need to come back or sit down and work on this, you know, this is just to get the ball rolling, and I'm very open to work with the village board and, you know, answer any of these concerns. You're absolutely right, closing Main Street that many days, it's a lot.
It's expensive.
Yeah, I mean, and one thing, I mean, I've promised the Riverfront people, I've, we get to meet, they've requested to meet, Mark Miller and the Harperside. One thing I might be requesting, especially for the smaller ones, the Carnival Days and the Oldies Night, that we keep South Ocean Avenue open for vehicular traffic. Because I've gotten numerous concerns from our Riverfront businesses, that's their season. And when we cut South Ocean Avenue off, we're cutting their night down, and we're turning some people that might have made it to their establishment that night around because they don't want to deal with the traffic and the headache to go around, and it's a very legitimate concern. And I know with the Live After Five and the crowd, keeping South Ocean Avenue open to vehicular traffic causes concern safety with all that crowd of people crossing back and forth. But with an Oldies Night or a Family Fun Night, not, it's not as large of a crowd, not as much of a concern. And I would certainly personally support the idea of opening, keeping South Ocean Avenue open to ease the concern of our Riverfront and Waterfront establishment. And those are things that these things are just starting to come to me now as we first put this stuff out there. These dates have just been thrown out there, and all this stuff is just coming up to me now. And I, you know, I know the village's perspective, we want to set these dates in stone as soon as possible, but I do see in certain areas, there's little tweakings that we have to work out.
But the rain date, correctly from what, the festival's the 18th, so it's a new.
No, that's, oh, rain date for the, for the Family Fun Night, yes, it does.
Oh, okay, you're right, that's a good point, so let's hope it doesn't rain.
Yeah, you're talking, he's talking about the rain date for Family Fun Night.
Family Fun Night rain date is July the 18th is the rain date, which would fall, I guess, on the, on the Great Southern.
David, I think you really need to sit down and look at the number of days that you close Main Street. The effect that it has and not clearly post the date. They clearly understand the need to promote town out. You guys do a great job with the, the functions you put on, whether it was the car show, the Family Fun Night, the Live After Fives and so forth. But there's a point in time that it tips against you. So what I'm saying is that we're not here to deny things, but we're here to say that you really need to take a look at how you're doing, what's doing, how are you doing? You know, to have it closed on Thursday night, that had a different event on Friday night and closed again, that's the big dark end to this, to this community.
Why don't you consider that, sorry, consider that, you're talking about having theme nights, why don't you make that Alive After Five date for August 7th, an Oldies Night, have a car show coincide with that, and have Oldies music on the, on the stages or wherever the, you know, the venues that have the sidewalk musicians have Oldies, something like that. So it has a theme to it, and you don't have like a back-to-back closure.
Now, and this is, last year, you, you both had approved, both, both ones were approved that way. So, I mean, I was following based on that, but I, am I right now?
But that's really understood, I, but I understand that also. I'm just saying something that's from a guy just looking at it. Just a little more.
I mean, I requested from our committees the dates for their events. They gave me all that information, I put together as a form of a letter to the village with those requests. And at this point, believe me, I'm much happier than I was expecting. I was expecting, particularly with the Live After Five stuff, a little bit more of a discussion, more than a general okay. So I appreciate that.
Let me push back.
Okay.
We moved the Alive After Five to Thursday to content. I mean, Friday nights, the confluence of the restaurants and the Live After Five, the kids supposedly in the drinking area. So we moved it to Thursday. And I, I think moving it even one day back to Friday was going in the wrong direction. And I think extending the hours is real, the restaurants may want, but all the logistics that are associated with pleasant stuff now, and, I mean, it's going back to the sort of Marty-Ri atmosphere extended to that. I don't think we should do that. I think we're, we're positioning it as a family event, right?
Absolutely.
And last year was great, it was absolutely great, I give it.
Now, again, I mean, I, you know, I try to, I hear criticism complaints, and then we had so many people that were saying, you know, and I don't know if it's true or not, but I'm hearing that half the vendors are not, have already decided they're not coming back. And that's certainly our biggest revenue for the event as a chamber, has been the revenue we collect from the vendors that come that night. So I do have to be, as an executive director of this organization, be concerned about that. But, believe me, I, I thought the event ran was beautiful, and I've told everybody who's come to me that we were very happy with Thursday nights. You know, this is not a reflection on dissatisfaction as much as it, you know, I do want to, you know, I, I suppose to work for the people that, you know, that I, you know, that my organization, I'm just trying to pass that along. But, I mean, I do, hearing this and hearing this discussion, at least when it comes to Alive After, I think up to Alive After Five, that maybe we could come back, maybe we can have a meeting with the, with the restaurant committee, representative of our Live After Five committee, and a couple guys from the village, that we could sit down in the fifth precinct and put, you know, really come to a finalization on this. So there's, I understand, I don't know how the Chamber feels about that, and I do have representatives from the different committees that are here, and I want to give them an opportunity, Lori or John or anybody else from Jamie, from the restaurant committee, if you want to, is there anything that you want to add to what we're discussing here? Yeah.
Big now.
You walk the boards in the front.
I know.
I know you're concerned closing the street for Thursday night for Live After Five, and then Friday night for Oldies Night, that you, that you feel that we won't get the same crowd. The events I run, the people that come to those events, they don't come to Live After Five.
But it's still the back-to-back part, so keeping Main Street closed, do consider that, concern. I'm saying that I don't, I don't vote to have it happen, and see where it works. But I just think, you have to look at the numbers and that. And I understand the benefits of this to the businesses, I understand the need, but there is that other side of it at that point, and that's all.
Okay.
All right, so at this point, do we want to maybe hold off on the other approval of the dates until we get a better understanding and structure?
I don't, I think we can approve the dates just pending further discussion.
Okay.
So you have a calendar, we know they're out there, but I think the discussion, whether it's with the Chamber, whether it's on the PID, whether it's for in general, or within your own, I think we just take a, take a clear look at that whole idea of that number, that's all.
I would, I would agree with that, other than that July 18th rain date, if that's for the music festival.
Okay, yeah.
That would not be good.
Yes, I mean, be honest with you, that was, we should have not asked for July 18th, because there are any going on.
And I'd like to see the August 28th for Live After Five, the August 27th.
No, 21st, 29th.
No, I don't have my glasses on.
Make that for the people who sit in the house.
So you want to, you want to go back to that Live After Five approval for those dates and switch it back to the 28th? Or you want to wait to hear from the sergeant?
Why don't you have a discussion with Cap, have a discussion with Charlie, tell him the proof of days. Let's, at least get a big portion of this under the books, so you can start doing something.
Can you match it to a rain date?
Yes, I don't think that should be a problem, that we could change. I mean, I don't have a date I can give you off the top of my, you know, it's not gonna rain this year.
I may wait for them.
The rain be.
So last one, I guess we had a blow run, it was the Sidewalk Sales and Patch of Nautical, the Oldies Car Show, the 7th and 9th. And, yeah, I really understand, I feel as concerned about, you know, the night, the night, the night closure, just, it would be something that more like encouraged that to have there, August 7th or Live After Five, I mean, Oldies, Oldies Night, you know, take it as thematic sort of thing, just do it on one night with the whole theme of music, the cars, the, they dressed up in a pool skirt or anything.
It's a very interesting, it's a, it's an interesting idea.
Pool skirt?
Oh, a pooler, well, the idea of having people dress up and have a theme night for Oldies Night. If you want me to put on a pooler skirt, I certainly, hey, hey, what the heck?
On the 7th.
Huh? Well, the 7th, right, well, Friday, the 8th is not, that is not a Live After Five weekend, the Oldies Night. But I know what Jerry's suggesting, Jerry's saying maybe we could take one of our, our Alive After Five dates and incorporate the Oldies Night into one of those Alive After Five dates. I don't, I think it's an interesting idea that it's worth discussion.
Well, the concern is, I believe, the back-to-back street.
But there's no back-to-back street closure on that one.
Yeah, August 7th is Alive After Five.
Yes, August 7th.
Oh, you're right, I apologize. You're absolutely right. So we did get both of them there. As you see, it is, you know, with all the things that come on Patch of Nautical, it's hard to get dates that.
You were actually good for Family Fun Night, that's not.
Oh, so Family Fun Night was the problem, was, okay.
No, it was the other one.
Apologize, I knew we avoided one, you know, and we got one, so I apologize, I apologize about that.
David, do you want to do the rain date for Thursday, July 17th? Would that be on the board?
Lori, if we did the rain date on the Thursday instead of the following Saturday, or the following Friday?
Well, I have a committee meeting tomorrow night.
Right.
Can I bring up the committee and then?
Will we hold off the request for the rain date until that committee meets?
So what would the boards like to do about the Oldies? What do you have to say?
Well, the Oldies is supposed to be.
Yeah, the 8th is, is their second closed, isn't it?
Well, I thought your, your suggestion was incorporating a little bit of Sidewalk, Live After Five.
I, I think they're two different events.
Thank you. I mean, because the guys aren't gonna come with the cars, if you're gonna have vendors and bands and people, it's two totally different.
Can you combine Family Fun Night and Oldies Night?
That's two different months. We do Family Fun Night in July coinciding with July Sidewalk Sale Days.
Right.
To help promote the businesses, hoping to bring people to Main. That's why we came up with Oldies Night in August, because that's another sale weekend.
Right, so then maybe you have to go to Live After Five out of that Thursday. So it's not two nights. I mean, I would be frustrated if I was coming into town, or if I had a business on the South End and Main Street closed two nights.
Yeah, it's not a South End, whether it's the Bardies, or whether it's the Or, whether it's Harvard Grand, people get frustrated. They've always come to those places, like going down Ocean Avenue, down Wolf Street, make the right, make the left on Wolf Street Avenue. All of a sudden, they're coming from the North Shore, trying to get either to the Or or to one of those restaurants.
Why can't we do, why can't you do the first August of Live After Five on the 14th? Because you're going from 7th all the way to 29th. And that way you have Oldies on the 8th, then the next week you have a Live After Five, then you have a break, then you have a Live After Five.
I mean, I, this is, again, these are dates the Live After Five committee came up with. So, you know, I was putting it forth as was discussed, I don't know why we avoided the 14th, or why the 14th would have been avoided. You know, John, I don't remember the committee, if there was a reason we didn't do the 14th?
I think it was per consistency purposes, just trying to have like a consistent pattern for the dates.
Yeah, there's not a consistency in it, I notice, either. Yeah, it was getting, we, I just know we were sitting with the calendar, trying to find dates that night that the Live After Five committee met. And these were the dates that we thought worked based on everything else that was on the calendar.
Because you have a big gap then, from the 8th all the way to the 29th, with nothing. So I would, I don't know, and then you wouldn't have two nights in a row.
I'm not opposed to that, yeah, I just don't want to say a hundred percent yes without talking to the committee that's actually putting it together.
Why don't we just hold on, on those, and you come back and take another look at it?
I mean, what I'm gonna suggest and set up at this point after having this discussion is I think it would be good if a representative of the business promotion committee, the Live After Five committee, the restaurant committee, and the village, kind of sit, and the police, kind of sit down and, you know, come with a set schedule that will be recognized so in the future. We've added a few events here, Live After Five was changed for the first time. There's a lot of new things and new requests that are being thrown in here. And I recognize when they get going, I sent this letter, that this would open up a discussion, which I'd like to continue. And I think, instead of having our committee meet and throw new dates back at you, I'd rather us kind of collectively, kind of come up with something that makes sense to everybody, include the Riverfront people in on it as well, so we alleviate their concerns about all the time Main Street's closed in the summertime. And, you know, I think there's an answer to all this stuff, it just takes discussion, and we've got time to do it.
I just think that if you were the people coming from the North or the East, you get to any of the businesses on the river, you're not going around here, we figure it out quickly, but you might want to know how to get there. Joe Lo from Mount Sinai, that always goes to the Bardies or the Or. Joe Lo from Mount Sinai, that always goes to the Bardies or the Or, Down Ocean Avenue. They'll never, they'll never figure out how to get here. So, you know, it's just not about one group, it's about everybody together.
Okay, that was okay, thank you very much.
So, are we all going to do it on the side?
No, I would hold on to it.
I think Jamie from the Restaurant Committee did one.
One. Last year, Family Fun Night.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I gotta give you the name of that just again.
Jamie. James Banano from the Patch Up Room and the Patch Up Restaurant Committee. But last year, Family Fun Night and the Oldies was a little bit smaller an event than the Live After Fives, and I believe the road closing was supposed to go to Haven Street, but it went down to West Avenue, and the amount of vendors or cars were pretty much only parked between, were only parked east of Haven Street, so between Havens and West Avenue was all blocked off, there was nothing there, except empty parking spots. So the people trying to come to the Village to eat dinner in our Village, were having a tough time finding a place to park, and we had all those empty parking spots, um, that they could have used, but the road was closed. And Peter Sarich happened to be walking down the street, made a reference to it, he ended up talking to one of the police officers, and we ended up moving it back down towards Havens, so people were able to come down these streets, make a right on railroad, if they weren't parking there, they could make a right on railroad, and even get back behind the parking lot, behind Emporium and Bobby Kim and whatnot. So that's how I would just ask if we, if we had the road closing, at Havens, for the smaller events.
Let me take a look at all those events, because we don't know what the theater's gonna have, you know, or the 89 doors gonna have, or what the Emporium's gonna have, if those three places have something on the same night, if you're looking at 2,000 people, I mean, it really is a.
Which is a waste of a lot of empty parking spots, when traffic could have went around.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Jamie brought up, because I was there when that came up. We only requested, on our request, to close the Havens for those events, at that time. The code enforcement thought that, they, they looked at it from a traffic perspective, that closing it, that farther just made more sense logistically, traffic-wise. My, as I explained, Jamie, at the Restaurant Committee meeting, my plan is right now, and why I requested all the way to West Avenue, is I felt both Family Fun Night and Oldies Night needs a little more activity, we need to do more. And I've talked to the committee, and I'd like the opportunity to hopefully extend the things, that there will be stuff in front of, you know, happening over there for a reason for it to be closed, but with the understanding, if, if we're not successful in doing that, we're only requesting it to Havens, and would hope that it would be open, at that, you know, that area would be open.
Just a couple of other things, those things, the, the Royal Albert Road is more, if we'd like to get approvals to use the Seven Avenue, or actually, the former Seven Avenue Rainbow Shop, part of that. To have the, the former shop, it's been a great, paid, eight, nine years, every year. From eight o'clock to 1:00 PM, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Friday mornings, starting July, and running through the growing season, which, you know, could, could go into early November. So, yeah, it's a, it's a form of promotion.
And, just wanted, just wanted to make that, we have a guy that was doing flowers over on, on the spur.
Yeah.
And ask whether, because they, they start in July, he has to go forward with it. So they should move this, request whether they should move this tent, in his operation, over there, instead of being over there.
Next, that, having, if I had like a bar of village, though?
Yeah.
So you'd have like flowers, like Mother's Day and whatnot?
Yeah, I'll do that, yeah.
So it would be a permanent tent that you would do to sell?
Yeah, they put the tent up there for a month, like you did last year.
What do you think?
I, you know, just a request and a proposal.
It might be nice to have that section of town there.
There's another, and then take out the footprints, because with the tent, you have, you know, the walls.
You know, the, the other thing is, he, that tent competes with established businesses that sell flowers. So we should at least weigh that, and I, I, I heard from a bunch of people about it.
And he, he is not a grove. He buys all that.
He owns a lot of secondary trust businesses.
But I, I got an earful for several large, large businesses in that, you know, they, in tax, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I don't even know if it's growing.
Well, that's, I don't really care where it's grown, it's, it'd be issue of competition from someone who's operating a business in the geography of the Village, who is doing so on a privileged basis, I don't know if people make that.
Right, I know, that, that's, at some point, like, the point I was making, that, I believe the theme without modernized also is, at that time, it's a little bit long.
Oh, right, right. It'll be somewhere.
Somewhere.
I just, last, I would like to congratulate Patricia Romo. She's very qualified, she's gonna come do a wonderful job, serving truly. She'll, she'll grow in the position and serve the Village well. I just wanted to publicly thank Christopher Wire for his service. He's definitely modernized the system, and has made it a very well-oiled, running, efficient department in collection of clients, and, and just, you know, he's served the Village for, for a good dozen years, and has done that his job, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Mayor Phil Trustee.
First of all, I want to congratulate the Village on Carnegie Library. A lot of people, a lot of moving parts, it could collapse, you know, I mean, a lot of risks involved in doing what's happened with that. And, you know, now it's up to the library, I'm sure it's gonna be a treasure for the community, so. I was very skeptical by the way, in case you guys don't remember. I said it's gonna be the most expensive piece of real estate that's left of camp, which it may yet be, but it's a jewel. Second thing, I want to make the comment about Tritech. I went on a tour of Tritech a couple, a couple weeks back, it is absolutely amazing what's inside there. And the media, The Advance and Patch, done a pretty good job covering what's going on there. They have, they have 2,000 people who've signed up on the website, and 1,500 people who have spoken to them. And as you know, they're renting. The first renter is a 57-year-old Village resident, who is, some of us know. It's not all gonna be young people, it's, it's gonna make a huge impact. By the way, occupancy in a couple of months, so very excited. And the last thing, I want to, I want to address John a little bit. We're, we're aware that we have code, we have judgments that come from the zoning board and the planning board, and people ignore them. We do have legislation that was passed in the last year, that enables us to do something about it. And, you know, on my block alone, we get, we get two boarded-up buildings, and Brian's pursuing it as diligently as he can. But the bureaucracies and the hurdles that we have to jump, I mean, I know it's American, but some people who, I mean, people who have squatters in their house shouldn't be so protected by the law, but they are. But we're, we're gonna be talking to code over the next couple of months, and I'm not sure exactly what we're gonna do yet. Maybe we'll have campaigns, maybe we'll say, okay, this month is, let's get the houses that have too many satellite dishes. Next month, let's, let's get the, whatever we do with the same report. I'm not exactly sure what, believe me, we are absolutely aware, lots of things happen, and we don't do anything about it. I'm, I'm very frustrated by that.
Well, you know, just to aside from that, eight years ago, seven years ago, we, had a judge walk through 307 Cedar Avenue, walk through the house, and because of a technicality, allowed to continue. We got this Supreme Court Justice that actually walked through West Al, 307 Cedar Avenue, because of a technicality and a submission, said, he told you that. So, the frustration that you had, the frustration that we have, is we can do everything right, and do everything the way you're supposed to do it, and still, and as it should be, the law protects the property. And it's, it's incumbent on us, through our homework, to make sure that didn't, now it protects the home, a piece of property, but the homeowners are running that piece of property. And that's where the judge, he knows.
Happy New Year.
Let's see that.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Just got a couple things, I wanted to let everybody know that on April 2nd, the Patch Up Arts Council will have their first fundraising gala. This is gonna be something that's gonna be done in conjunction with the Restaurants in Town, in fact, we just left, I was working with Jamie over there from the Restaurant Committee. And so it's gonna be like a taste of Patch Up, all the restaurants will participate, and they'll have food, you serve, and we'll have wine. All kinds of foods, things like that. What's that?
Good wine.
Good wines, yes, donated, too. Donated a wine, so that's April 2nd, is it 8th, or particularly 8th, and as this develops, I'll have more information. Tom, have you mentioned, there's a, there's a new show at Patch Up Arts Council, I have not seen it because I was in Rattle, but he can, but Tom said it's fabulous.
Yeah, it is.
And the gift, and the name of it is, which is what I'm telling you, is Pre-Cognition. And it's the works of Lorena Salsida Watson, Mena Romano, and Devora Zlatzky. The exhibit will be on display until February 22nd. In Pre-Cognition, each present imagery verging on but never quite attained recognition. Viewers approach each work with a feeling that the imagery is just beyond their grasp, and that with a bit more contemplation, the images will reveal themselves. The viewer is essentially in a state of pre-recognition. You know, probably wrote it.
Some guy that can spell it.
So that's the show, I hope they stop down by the gallery and see it, and I understand that the show is open on space.
I'm absolutely, I'm here.
I don't know, but John Seon wrote it.
John Seon wrote it, he had, he had editorial correction, but I think, right.
Pre-recognition.
Pre-recognition. And, that is all I have for tonight.
Just to add, think about Saturday in Patch Up. It had the, Patch Up Arts Council opening at, like, 3:00 PM. It had the arts, art space opening at 5:00 or something like that. And then at 7:00, you had the second, and some people will know of all three.
And you can take a movie, too.
And you can, yeah, if you, yes.
Which I neglected to mention, that the movie play, Lost Back Now, is in Tom Brothers' movie, inside of the.
Yeah, I've seen that twice, I think.
You've seen it twice?
I saw it this afternoon.
They just opened a couple of days ago, they'll, they'll run it for up to three weeks.
They have Nebraska also.
They have Nebraska, they have Nebraska.
And they're gonna have the Robert Redford film. It's gonna be at the Brick House on 21st.
Oh, is that Robert Redford, and I'm sorry, but I know the next movie is on camera later. That's coming after this one. That's it? No.
By the way, the Arts Council exhibit, you wouldn't find anything better in South Park. You know, the last two Arts Council exhibits have been super professional, they are. They have big, big insurance policies.
Trustee, who?
I'd like to thank the board, guests, I'd like to congratulate Barbara O'Neil on her position, wish her best of luck. And I do, I do, recognize that she's the first woman justice the Village has had, I think that's something to be proud of. I'd like to request approval for the 14th annual World Tai Chi Kyung Day on Saturday, April 26th, from 9:00 AM noon to 11:00 AM noon, Shorfront Park, it's motion.
Senator Brodsky brought that to the party. This trustee, right, which is a trustee, correct?
Absolutely.
It's been here, you know, what, 13, 14 years now?
Good things continue.
Absolutely.
Motion, go ahead, say it.
And I'd also like to request approval for the whole Tai Chi in the park, every Saturday in June, every Saturday in August from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at Shorfront Park.
Say it. Say it.
And also, I'm encouraging them to make an official request to the board, with the PYA, the opening day is also April 26th, at Yarrawa and Park. That's what you say? That's not a motion.
For the parade or anything?
Not yet. Trying. But apparently, that's the way. And, that's all I have.
Get it covered by the board. Cancel. Tell the prosecutor.
Mary Bassler, 193 North Ocean Avenue. The next time when you do code enforcement, you have, you know, satellite dishes, let's have houses that are out of their zoning, that are not complying with zoning, 72 North Ocean Avenue. Still there, still operating. How many years can you be, if I don't shovel, Alice Stone will give me a ticket if I don't shovel my sidewalk, and then when the snow comes.
Hold on one second, Counsel.
You know, we had a discussion, I, I don't want to get too deep into the enforcement of it, but we had a discussion with, because I don't really want to write a defendant brief on what I'm gonna say, but.
Just tell, what I need to know is, is something being done? Is there a hope that we will lose a business in a residential neighborhood?
Yeah, we had, we had a meeting with the Chief Building Inspector today, again, to talk about what the enforcement efforts are against the house and the proof. He's bringing, he's brought the prosecutor into the, into the discussion as to what would be sufficient proof to prove business. We have the web evidence.
Stand outside and watch the people walk in and out.
There it is, no, right, you know, we have to get statements from them, and to get affidavits for why they're going in, there are proof reasons to what would rise to the level of, which they are, criminal prosecution, which is violations of our jurisdiction. So there, those are the things that we're looking at. As you know, that property has no property maintenance violations, because the lawn is cut, the, the house is maintained, and nothing that would be.
However, since she's now renting it as an event, event space, we might.
Right.
She's got no fire escapes, she's got no sewage treatment, she's not, got no garbage arrangements, she's renting it as an event space now.
The only criminal evidence we have of that is the website for now. So, you know, we have to prove the website, we'll put it up, where the connection is, so we're looking at all of those elements to get there. Just as Satan is there, it's not gonna be something that's going to result in a criminal conviction, and the concern is, if you do it the incorrect way, you will ultimately then be barred from doing it again. So we want to make sure we get it right, and that's what the process is.
I, I, I hear you, but I, I think that, that almost five years is, is really, we're, we're, we're more than trying to do it.
It's the problem that we have down at 307 Cedar Avenue. Because the judge went in and made a decision, we have the counteracted decision he made, and it is extremely frustrating on our side. And it's, that's not the only home that we give.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure of it.
That house is not as obvious as you make it out to sound, if you would think, I mean, it doesn't have a sign, it doesn't have.
It's, it's only obvious if you happen to live
Yeah.
in the area, and, and, you know, for the those of us that live in the area, it's obvious.
And then, of course, you know, are they visiting for tea, or are they visiting for business? That's, I mean, a, a very smart defense lawyer would come in with that argument and say, you have no proof that the people that are coming in are coming for business. I'm not writing a defendant's brief, I really don't want to speak against the village, but I'm just speaking as some of the.
As a resident that's living there, it's, I, it's very frustrating to have her blatantly, I mean, she bought it knowing that she was out of there.
It's frustrating to have, on my side, to have you talk about the, because I, I know what we tried to do and how we tried to get there, and the concerns that I have of having a judge make a decision that bothers us.
That works.
Have a judge reverse what we're pushing.
What's that?
The judge reversed our decision. More possible.
Yeah.
Just saying, we don't want to go down that road.
That'll, I have a road.
At least, we really need to, to pay.
It's one good way to do it, I.
I forgot.
Pamela Bar, 177 Cedar Avenue. Speaking again on behalf of the Congregational Church, I want to thank you for agreeing to that time change on Sunday for the St. Patrick's Day Parade and the road race. That would be a. That would be a big help to us. But another big help would be if the day of that event, the forty spaces that we have asked in the past to be set aside could be behind the church and not behind Blums. Because it doesn't help our senior citizens using walkers and canes, et cetera, to have to come from Blums to the church. We'd like those forty spaces behind the church. And we promise to be out in plenty of time for people to occupy them who are coming to set up and to view the parade. So forty spaces please on Sunday, March thirtieth, behind the church.
Why didn't I have spoken?
Okay, that would be a big help.
Just aside to the fourth chapter, they have, they blew up a large picture of them working in front, instructing the Congregational Church. It is spectacular. You're looking at that big.
That came from our historian, Charlie Werner.
I understand that, but it is just a magnificent piece. You know, and I talked about.
And as a librarian, I just want to throw this out to the public. The Congregational Church gets a lot of requests from people regarding historic events in the village itself. And not just only related to the church. And of course, the Patchogue Library has a wonderful local history room. So when you are doing research, of course, you would check the local history room at the Patchogue Library, but don't forget the Congregational Church. We've been here since seventeen, whatever, two hundred and twenty-one years ago is.
The Bugis is.
Since the fight. We'll be having our two hundred and twenty-first annual meeting next month.
One twenty-first.
Two hundred and twenty-first, yes. And it's my privilege to be the chair, the outgoing chair of the church council this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No comments. Yes, sir.
David Kennedy, forty-eight Cedar Avenue. And I'm doing a rare speaking as a resident. I don't do that very often anymore because I want to keep my job. But I do want, I mean, I don't want to, I didn't want to do it during my report and mix the two. But as a resident, I want to say thank you so much for the Carnegie Library. Thank you so much, Patchogue Menford Library, Laura Howard, for making that happen. Extremely ecstatic about it. It's a jewel, and it's preserving our history, which is very near and dear to my heart. Jerry, thank you for recognizing the friends of the Carnegie Library. But, you know, even though I helped get that ball rolling, really the heart of the Carnegie Library has been John Bojack. So I do want to spread, you know, put, kind of transfer that to John, and just say thank you to everybody. It just shows, you know, no matter what, when the community gets together, anything can happen, so thank you.
You know, just another note that, thank, you know, Joe Keys and GPW were the people that pushed this over the top. Right now, we're fighting the issue of the powers. So that's the, the South Ocean Avenue is a mess, and we have to attack it.
Yes, well, right on top of it, Mr. Mayor.
I saw your email.
There's a very good discussion I have with you this morning.
Did you shake his head and say, what are you doing?
You know what he said.
Any other questions?
Do you want to speak?
Good morning.
Well, one more, thanks, I'm just going to put my home address or the, not your, the office address. Okay, so twenty-seven South Ocean Avenue. I just wanted to ask about the business owners, because now, I'm in an office all day, but we do have employees that have to be there all day long with the parking regulations. Because from what I've read, it's going to be two-hour parking still in the course of the street. Because I have, employees have to work nine to five-thirty, but if they can only park two hours, I can't let her out every two hours to move her car.
So there are going to be spaces for employees that you'll be able, they'll be able to get employee stickers by here, right at Village Hall, for six dollars a month. Also, they can park in other parking lots and parking areas that have free parking. They will have to walk a little bit to get there, but there will be enough free parking for employees.
Where's the free parking going?
Every parking lot is going to have free parking. Some of the spaces are daytime metered only, and then they get start, get metered at six o'clock at night. So, and then all through the day, there's going to be employee areas where employees can park, as long as they have a sticker. They can park, again, the employees are the ones that we expect to be parking furthest away from businesses and leave the spaces available for customers. So they won't be parking on the street, they'll be parking on the best spaces. But, that being said, the lock system is still being finessed. And we haven't, we don't have a final plan in place yet for where those spaces are going to be. But there will be enough free parking for people.
Jack, the employee stickers will not be put in the street parking lots.
Exactly, yes, only in lots.
Oh, but there's going to be a charge for those employee stickers? Okay.
But they'll have to get a sticker. They can go someplace and park for free, but maybe you have to walk a lot.
Is it sixty percent of spaces in the village?
About sixty percent of the spaces will still be free for it.
Okay, but what's to prevent somebody else, you know, like a customer from parking, you know what I mean? Are they going to be designated as employee spots, or?
No, they're going to be designated as spots where employees can park with stickers.
Okay, but like the public can't park there?
Oh, no, the public can park there too. Anybody can park there. But the public would have to pay the regular fifty cents an hour rate. Where your employees, they would pay six dollars for the entire month. So if they're working eight hours a day, and they were feeding the meter, it's going to cost them four dollars a day, times twenty dollars a month, that's eighty dollars a month, as compared to six dollars.
Gotcha, okay, and when did those go into effect?
Those spaces will go into effect sometime in late spring.
Okay, so for, right now, for instance, across the street from our office is lot six. So we can park there right now with no meters?
Yes.
And again, we're covering up against the same two-hour regulation there.
There are spaces in there that aren't just two-hours. Two-hour spaces are just, I think, in the middle spaces, but along the back there's.
They're constantly filled, I mean.
You've got a lot of successful businesses in there. I mean, go behind Terry Street, like behind where you are. Do you have a back entrance to you?
No.
But if you go around the corner, then Terry Street, there are spaces.
We have those angled spaces right on Terry Street. Those are your turnpike hole there, but nobody's ever in them.
Those aren't two-hours?
Well, the first four are two-hours.
Some are two-hours. Yeah, not all but lots are two-hours. Part of this, all-day parking in a lot of these spaces.
But that's just the first four.
First four are usually two-hours, and the rest don't matter.
It's just confusing, like the signage, because I don't know, you know.
They go on to.
And just on, not a parking note, but as far as the boarded-up houses and whatnot, you know, I have posed before that even though we are a for-profit, I actually work with sales, people avoiding foreclosure before it gets to that. So if there's anything that the village needs, the homeowners don't pay me at all. I work directly with the bank to avoid the foreclosure, to bring our property values back up. Because each foreclosure, boarded-up house brings our property value in that block down nine percent. So if there's anything that we can help, or, you know, or that I can help, just reach out.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustees. Mr. Mayor, I have listened to Mr. Kennedy's pitch. And I listened to the response.
You get the name of the person, Richard?
Richard Kemp, Jennings Avenue. I have listened to Mr. Kennedy's pitch for the Alive or Thrive and all the events. And his main concern was the merchants. And I also listened to the response from all of the trustees. And no one, absolutely no one, has taken into consideration any residents who may be affected by all this noise levels. I have asked you quite some time ago if you could do something to lower the decibel levels after dark. The town of Brookhaven has lower decibel levels after dark, and you adamantly refused to do anything at that time. I would like to ask you now, is there anything you can do?
Look it up on Noise Code, see whether it's out.
Well, is that somebody up for you, or?
Take a look at it.
I'm asking you.
I want to, Mr. Hilton's answer was the correct. The guys are certified with the mews, let's see what the decibel levels are, let's compare it to what the town does. Let's also take a look at it to see what happens. Once you have a four-story building at the end of your block, they will probably block a portion of that, that music hall, so. I would suspect the new village project, five stories of concrete building, will pummel you quite a bit.
I certainly hope so.
So do I.
I certainly hope so, but I have, right down at the end of Jennings Avenue, I have a shoot now. So I don't know what's going to happen with that. But, you know, I am concerned about this, and I think that you people should be also, and you are not. The last time I spoke, I believe, I'm going by memory now, I believe the village levels were seventy decibels, and the town of Brookhaven were fifty-five after dark. I'm just guessing now. But they were lower in the town of Brookhaven. Town of Brookhaven lost. And I asked you if you could do something to lower the decibel level in the village of Patchogue, and you refused to lower the decibel level. I'm asking you now, can you do something to lower the decibel level?
I'm going to do, is what Mr. Trustee Hilton recommended. You'll see that at the first Alive or Thrive.
Okay, next issue, Lake Street. The road is.
A mess.
A mess.
It's going to be paved, once the project is done, it will be paved there, ocean, back to main, down, ocean.
Well, in the meantime, isn't there something they could put down a temporary, just gravel?
They do temporary, I mean, we asked them, and when it does get that bad, we asked them, up to this point, they've always complied.
Well, it's very.
They're not going to be using the whole street, obviously, but they, you know, they'll take. But we'll look again, we've had a tough storm, and there are a lot of potholes, but we can look again, and we'll ask them again if there's potholes there. And they're going to make temporary fixes, obviously.
Right, right. You know, even a whole patch, I guess.
What happened was like the other night, they had, they had done some repair, probably beginning of December. And the other night, some kind of water authority came in and built it all over again. So they fix it in the water authority or, you know, lifer or.
But we've been time to time asking to take care of it.
Yeah, same.
Well, isn't the water company supposed to even put down a temporary patch?
Yeah, they do, but they're temporary patches.
Very temporary.
Well, then I think you, as mayor, should get after these people, because it damages people's car. I also have noticed on North Ocean Avenue, on the light posts, there are outlets.
Yes.
On each post. People have been putting Christmas lights on those metal poles. And I am concerned that it may be a liability if somebody gets electrocuted.
How about electrician, check to see if they're grounded properly?
I believe that there are locking covers that you can buy for that outlet that's cut into the.
But the outlet is there for that purpose, so I would suspect it's grounded properly, so that doesn't happen. I'll ask the village electrician to look at it.
Well, a ground and a locking cover are two different things.
No, I realize that, but what I'm saying to you is that the purpose of the covers is to do exactly what is happening. People putting up decorations or some sort of ornaments to make it festive.
Kind of looked nice when you were driving down North Ocean Avenue.
It may vary.
And some, I don't know who they might be, might have had lights on their light posts.
I thought I had the floor. Again, my pitch is that the liability issue, if somebody gets electrocuted.
That was my point, of making sure that they are certified with that.
I mean, the posts on South Ocean, the merchants put a, put a reed. But they didn't go on North Ocean, so private homeowners, you know, started wrapping these.
They look pretty neat, too.
Cheap electric. They look like, then all over the place. So I think that you should do something to prohibit that in the future. And the easiest way, I think, that you can do is locking covers. And I'm sure if you have a qualified electrician, he would know about locking covers.
The first thing we have to qualify electrician do is to see whether there's a.
There is a key lock. Okay?
Card, thank you. Any other problems?
Tom looks so glum this morning.
No, just wait.
You know what, all this is against comments that the one thing that's still home question to me is decibel level. He's quite correct. Decibel levels are too high. They should be lowered. You should spend some time really considering that fact as soon, before the season starts again. And again, on the issue of enforcement, recently, Mrs. Miller, who's in this audience, a year ago, had an eighty-decibel level at a local restaurant bar next to her home.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. Twelve months later, that issue was adjudicated. And that's an example of really of what is happening in the village court. It's not entirely all the responsibility of the village justice, because we have a village prosecutor as well, under your command. Month after month after month, adjournment after adjournment after adjournment, until it becomes a ridiculous issue. No action is taken until the season is over. And then the penalties are applied, they're applied to the town when they have no real meaning. You can pull a license, a lawyer's license, in January, by the time it comes around and the season comes around, they're eligible to get a new license.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm not finished.
Well, maybe you are.
No, I don't think I am, I'm right, sure I am. He's right, and I'm right too.
Well, and I've listened to you, you've made your point. You want to beat the point into the ground, or you want to keep going?
Yeah, I do want to keep going.
But I don't want you to keep going.
Well, why is that?
Because you're just repeating yourself.
No, well, I don't think you're hearing me.
Well, let's put it this way, I admire you. I thank you very much for your comments. Motion to adjourn. Motion. Motion. Session? All favor? Okay.